Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. We're here for the purpose of the committee of the whole. It is 8:20. I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask Clerk Ciprian to call the roll.
Terudo?
Here.
York?
Right here.
Levin?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Anquest?
Here.
Kennedy? Absinthe? Mulliver?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn? Absinthe? Leader?
Here.
Palomski?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
All present, two absent.
All present, two absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item Two announcements. Any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council, specifically the chair, on any item they so choose. Clerk Spencer, Ciprian. Has anybody signed up for public forum?
No mayor.
Okay, so no one signed up for public forum. We have a sign-up sheet in the back of the room that we put out there before the meeting at this time. Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet but still wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. Seeing none, that concludes public comment. We will dive right into business for the committee, review of our budget. City Manager has set us up. He's being very optimistic in what we're going to cover this evening. I see that the principals for our first agenda item, Public Library, are with us. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd ask everybody to turn to page 164 in their budget book. And we will start with the library, and I will go ahead and turn it over to the board president.
Why, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Morley and city council members. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight to review the library's budget. My name is Marsha Baker. I'm the president of the Library Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by introducing the other trustee who is here, always here, Sue Sadowski. And library director Mary Beth Harper is also here. So, a recent opinion piece in the September 8th edition of the New York Times was entitled, "To Restore Civil Society, Start With The Library," and it pointed to the increasing importance of libraries in our society today. The author of the piece is a sociologist who has done extensive work, extensive research on the use of libraries. And he wrote that although some critics say that libraries are becoming irrelevant, nothing could be further from the truth. In fact, library circulation, program attendance, and average hours visiting are up all across the country. Why? Because, according to the author, libraries are examples of something he calls "social infrastructure." And he says, "They are the kinds of places where people with different backgrounds, passions, and interests can take part in a living democratic culture. They're the kinds of places where the public, private, and philanthropic sectors can work together to reach for something higher than the bottom line." What a great way to look at our own public library. It is with this in mind that I present a snapshot of what the library has accomplished this year. I hope this brief report gives you a sense of what the library means to our community and how we are upholding our commitment to provide social infrastructure to the residents of Elmhurst. One of the most important things that happened this year was the renovation of the kids' department. The project took about eight months to complete, and the changes include a larger play literacy area for our youngest library users called the Learning Garden, a dedicated middle school space, a youth computer lab, and new furniture, carpet, and paint that spruced the place up after 14 years, can you believe it, of heavy usage. The response from patrons about the space has been overwhelmingly positive. The Learning Garden is often full of parents and caregivers with children who are happily playing and exploring their new area. The carefully thought-out space supports literacy in accordance with the developmental needs of young children. In contrast, the dedicated middle school space gives our older kids a room without the inclusion of adults, although there's a window. It is an after-school hangout with cool furniture and a gaming system. Before the renovation, the tweens had very small space within the kids' department to call their own, and it's great to see these young people using the library in an area that is specifically designed for their age group. The Makery, which has been open for just over a year, is designed for all ages. It's a creative space where community members come to fuel their passion for all things do-it-yourself. Users leave with a sense of satisfaction and pride when they make something with their own hands. The Makery is also a sharing space where makers often approach one another, inquiring about what the other is working on. It builds a sense of community, something we can always use more of in today's screen-dependent society. You may have heard that a growing trend in urban libraries is to hire social workers to address the needs of patrons in the building, who may be homeless or in need of other social services. Several suburban libraries in the Chicago area have begun to fulfill this need by hiring their own social worker or using social workers from nonprofit agencies. In response, this year, we have embarked upon the inclusion of social work interns who hold regular office hours in the library. The interns are from Aurora University School of Social Work, and they're supervised by their licensed faculty. We hope that this will give us a really good idea about whether our community has a need for this service. There are times when patrons need help beyond the scope and knowledge and expertise that librarians can offer. It's at these times that staff may refer the patron to the onsite intern who can offer further assistance. So far, the program has been successful. Several patrons have been referred to the social work interns, and staff now has an extra hand when dealing with situations that are out of their realm of expertise. So now, I'm going to talk about the library building. So it's hard to believe that the new library is 15 years old. The building has been beautifully maintained, and all the major spaces have been renovated to meet the changing needs of the community. The staff and board are planning for necessary repairs and upkeep as the building ages. We have carefully set aside money in the special reserve fund, and will continue to do so in order to ensure that we maintain the building to the same level that people have come to expect. The floor in the main lobby will be replaced in 2019 because the cork flooring is starting to show its age. The project will be done in phases, so the library will not be closed to the public at any point during the replacement. Major systems will be evaluated for life expectancy, and staff will plan for necessary repairs or replacements. The building is the perfect size for Elmhurst, and it will continue to serve this community for the next 15 years and beyond. Throughout all of our building renovations, patrons have been patient and understanding. The one issue, however, that comes up frequently is parking. Our lot is often filled to capacity, and patrons complain about not being able to find a place to park or having to circle around many times, even with the addition of spaces at the art museum. During the day, the lot is often filled with young families and strollers. Popular evening programs fill the lot quickly. We consider it a measure of success that so many patrons come to the library, but the availability of parking has put a limit on our services beyond the size of our beautiful building. It is the one consistent issue of dissatisfaction in our patrons' surveys. The city has been doing a great job alleviating parking issues in the city center, and I'm sure that shoppers and commuters are pleased. Library parking has been an ongoing problem, and we would be open to hearing from city planners about ideas they may have to help us figure out a solution. Before you tonight, you have our budget, which includes not only our operating expenses but also the funds needed for the repayment of our building bonds. We are in the final years of paying off the building bonds, and we'll see significant increases to the bond payment for the next three years. We have worked out a plan with the finance department to take relatively modest levy increases until the bonds are paid off. After that, the levy will be reduced to reflect the payoff of the bonds. Finally, I want to mention that we just found out the library was awarded another five-star designation. Elmhurst is one of only three libraries in the state to receive five stars. We are extremely proud of this because it takes a group effort to receive this award. We need the skills of the staff to make the library an inviting and interesting place. We need the Library Board of Trustees to provide guidance and support to the staff, and we need the residents of Elmhurst to continue to enjoy their library. So on behalf of the board and in the spirit of teamwork and support, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council, as well as the city manager and the rest of the city staff who help us on a daily basis. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is someone going to present the budget, or? I want to save questions until...
Excuse me, excuse the noise there. So before you, we have our budget, as Marsha said, and basically you can see the areas were taking increases and the areas were taking decreases in. The one big change in this budget this year is, of course, our ballooning bond fund payment. But within three years, those bonds will be paid off, and we will be decreasing the levy. Any questions on anything?
Any questions from council? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Each year when the library comes in, it's interesting because, as already stated, it's transforming itself into what just used to hold books, to cassettes, to DVDs, to CDs, to the Makery, as well as doing capital improvements, like the kids' department. Is that the accurate description?
Yes.
The one question, and it's kind of a general question, and you already touched on the bonds that are out there. My question was going to be on when will all those bonds be paid off, but you already stated in three years, all of them?
Yep.
Because I think one of them is, and is next year, and then the other ones, I guess, two additional years. My only question is, I noticed that the fund balance at end of year every year has been going down. I don't know if that's planned spending to be able to keep the increase every year low. It seems to be planned to kind of level off at 2.4 roughly. How is that being accomplished? Is that because the bonds are going to be paid off? What is the rationale of being able to, A, spend down, but then what seems to be leveling off at a $2.4 million fund balance?
Well, our goal is to keep about 2.5 million in that fund balance. So we do drop a little bit below that at points, but we need to keep about 2.5 million in that balance because of the way our dollars come in. So when we used to be on a different fiscal year, before we switched over to the new January to December fiscal year, we receive our tax payment, our first big tax payment at the end of June. So basically, from January till June, we don't see any income, or very little income, I should say. We see fines and fees and things like that, but that's a very small percentage of our income. We get our first big payment in, in June, and then we receive the rest of our payments until the end of the year. So we need to keep about 2.5 million in that fund, and we actually had a lot more than that at one point. We have been spending down that balance and doing renovations and upgrades to the building with that money. So for now, the next couple of years, paying off the bonds, our goal is to keep about 2.5 million in that fund and levy accordingly to keep that amount of money in so we can keep running during that period of no funds coming in. Does that explain it for you?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, great.
Additional questions for the library? Alderman York.
Thank you. So I did notice in the revenue side, the state grants increased quite a bit, you know, from 30,000 to 55,000. That was a per capita thing, or what?
Yes, that is a per capita grant. I'm trying to see if that was, I don't think this was...
Alderman York, what? Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page in line?
Page 167, about the intergovernmental revenue, '02, '00.
Got it.
Yeah. So it is a per capita grant, and a couple of years, they were giving us less per capita, and then they kind of increase it. They increase the per capita a little bit, so, you know, it's a state, and we kind of never know what we're going to get. In fact, I would have, a couple of years ago, said we probably weren't going to be getting that grant at all anymore, but that hasn't happened. So we never know what the rate's going to be until they kind of send it to us, or they tell us ahead of time we got it. So we plan, again, we're planning for about 55,000, but 2016, 2017, it was down to about 34,000.
Right, yeah. I remember that number from years past, and then all of a sudden, just this year jumped up to 55, so I was kind of wondering what that was all about.
Yeah, it's...
And apparently you have some faith in it because it's in your budget.
We do have some faith now. Like I said, I would have predicted a few years ago during the recession that we weren't going to see it at all, and that hasn't happened, so we are planning for it. Thankfully, it's just a small part of our revenue budget. You know, some libraries, that's not the case, depending on their budget, but we're lucky that it's a small part of ours. And that's essentially the only funding we receive from the state.
Alderman Levin.
Well, first of all, congratulations on your five-star rating. It's very remarkable and very good reflection on the community. And second, I appreciate your bringing the parking issue to our attention. Again, I know that even in your second or third year, I remember meeting with you. If it makes you feel any better, we, I think downtown is not fully, I get calls from commuters, not enough parking, Spring Road, so we do have some parking issues, but it's important that you highlight that for us. The question I wanted to ask is, I'd heard that there were social work, I didn't know whether they were just interns, and then I heard you mention here. Can you tell me what, how that works and how that is a library function?
Well, we see a lot of different people in the library, some regularly, every day. It's a public building, so anybody can enter, and anybody can be there for just about any amount of time they want to, that we're open. So we have regular patrons, we have patrons who come in once in a while, but libraries have always been institutions where people come, sometimes when they have no place else to go, sometimes they just come because they feel it's a safe place, sometimes it's a place to get on the computer, sometimes it's a place just to be around other people. So we've always been handling issues, social issues, with patrons, and I think recently, just, we're just talking about this with Marsha and Sue, libraries are now sort of really embracing that role, where we used to manage patrons and kind of figure, okay, well, maybe this isn't our problem. It has become our job to help people, sometimes daily, sometimes long extended times, and adding these social workers to the building to bring the resources directly to the people who are there is working out for other libraries. And we're seeing this all across the country, where libraries, especially, it started in urban libraries, and a few years ago, when we heard libraries were actually hiring social workers on staff, I kind of thought, oh, we would never need that. You know, it wasn't a service that we would need. And now, fast forward, here we are, just two years later, we start kind of thinking about what we're doing on our job and how we're doing it, and some of the conversations I have that I frankly go back to my office and think, you know, huh, did I handle that the right way? Did I give that person the right advice? Should we have done something differently? Having a social worker around can actually help with those conversations. And I'll just give you an example of something without getting into, delving into patron privacy, but we do have an elderly gentleman who comes to the library every single day who does have advanced stage dementia and lives here in town, and we provide, I would say, a place for him to come every single day. And that's part of what we do. Today, I make phone calls to DuPage County to try and find some more help for this gentleman. So we're kind of doing these things, and it was one of those wake-up calls where we said, how are we doing it? What are we doing? I don't have a degree in social work, but other libraries are actually bringing social workers on staff or having interns in the building so that when we have these issues, we actually have someone there who does have that expertise. It's really, it's really been very interesting, and it's been very successful here, too, I would say. Some of the work that our social workers are doing right now is helping patrons who are out of work, helping them with advanced job searching that sometimes we can't do because we can't take that much time for one transaction. So what these social workers do is they can actually sit with someone and provide more time finding some of these things. Also, resource referrals, we've had people come in and ask us where they can get a meal, where they can find some place to sleep tonight. Issues exist everywhere, and some people might think that they don't exist here in town. I'm sure you think otherwise, but they would think they don't, but it's true, they do exist here, and now we are in a better position to help them. So what we thought with getting social work interns into the library was it was a good way to kind of test the waters and see if this was a need that we did have here in town. So the interns are from Aurora University Social Work School, and they have to do 600 hours or something of internship hours at an entity. So we called them, we set up these internships, and it's a great way for them to get their internship hours and for us to see how our community likes having this service right there in the library. Does that kind of answer? Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, I would endorse what you're saying in terms of providing a resource for people to find other services, but are we stepping into the therapeutic mode where, okay, because that was my concern about like...
No, they're not holding clinical hours, I think that's what they call them, in the library, per se. They're holding referral hours. They're also there to kind of reinforce some of the conversations staff has to have with patrons. You know, there's been people that I've consulted with them and said, hey, this is, this is what I have going on. Is this the correct way to approach this situation? So they're also a help for staff in dealing with some of the situations.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman Palomski.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question after hearing Alderman Levin. Do you have any coordination with Metropolitan Family Services? There's a representative that will come here to, they have office hours in City Hall, a social worker, so I'm just wondering if, you know, if you're evaluating this, if there's a possibility to consider what we already offer, perhaps office hours would be in the library, or, you know, I'm not sure how that could be organized, but...
You know, we have, we have used a social worker here, too. We've reached out to the social worker to help us handle some of these issues that we have, and it was, it's kind of funny that you say that because us testing the waters with this intern and seeing how it's worked has then led us to have discussions about taking this another step further. So just today, I met with a couple of people on staff, and one of the ideas we threw out there, a couple of libraries are funding their social workers because President's Hospital Group actually funds the social workers in some of the libraries up in Evanston, they do that. So my next step is to kind of work with, possibly see if the hospital here in town is willing to work with us, and then also talk to the city staff and see what we can do with the social worker here on staff for the city, and kind of look at all these different resources we have right here in town to see how they might be able to partner with us and think about the library maybe differently as, hey, the people are there already instead of us sending someone over here, instead of us sending someone to the hospital, maybe they'd have someone in the library to kind of handle some of this stuff right onsite. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Follow-up, Alderman Palomski?
Thanks.
How often are these interns onsite?
We have one there on Tuesday and Thursday, and then someone there at nights, she's there this evening, and Saturdays. Yeah, so they're doing, they're going to school, and they have to do a lot of internship hours. And we actually have another intern we just interviewed who will hopefully come onboard in January as one of our interns is done with his hours in February. They do hold some regular, like, office hours where patrons can come in and, again, if they need something, a referral towards something, or help with a job search or something like that, they can see the social worker.
Any additional questions?
I'm not sure I caught your answer for Alderman Bram's question. When is the last of the bonds mature?
2022.
2022, okay. All right, any additional questions? Alderman Brennan.
So with respect to the parking, I agree with everyone else. I mean, it's frustrating, you know, as, you know, you go to a destination, it's, you know, it takes time to find a spot, but how does the current parking and maybe easier, more easily asked, what is the normal traffic, you know, number of patrons that come to the library on a daily basis?
So we see over 600,000, there's 600,000, over 600,000 visits to the library a year. And every, any given day, I would say there's about 1,000 to 1,200 people who visit the library. Our Tuesday is our busiest day. It's very, very busy, to the point where I'm having to cut back on some major programs like Storytime's because we just can't accommodate the parking. We are at the point where we really increased our programming a few years ago, and I can't increase anymore. In fact, I'm kind of having to start to have to pull back from programming. If you notice, our budget line, we have decreased it not significantly, but a little bit, and we can't accommodate all the people in the lots, and then, we haven't figured out yet why Tuesday's the busiest day because we have people there for programs, so I have to cut back on programs, but I think it just might be people's favorite day to come to the library. I don't know, maybe, we're trying to check if it's like new releases come out that day, so they all come, but Tuesday's very busy, so we have to cut back on programming. Sundays are very busy because we're only open for four hours. It's a condensed period of time. But with more programs, with renovated spaces, with new additions like the Makery, more people are coming, which is all great, it really is, but then we're filled to capacity with parking, and we get complaints about that. So our traffic flow patterns are pretty consistent in that if we have programs going on, of course, the parking lot's pretty full. Meeting room space, that's the other big deal. Our town, this community, really wants meeting room spaces, as I'm sure you know. So we're kind of having to pull back a little bit from that, too, and be careful about what we do with meetings because if we get a meeting at the library and there's 50 people coming to the meeting, you know, and then there's all the other people who are there just for normal business, and then we have some program going on, we're, again, filled to capacity. So it's really something we have to be thinking about, good problem to have, like, I'm sure you, you have the problem, too, with everybody wanting to come to Elmhurst and shop and do all their business here and all that wonderful stuff, but it's also frustrating because we feel like we're having to cut back on certain services.
City Manager Grabowski wanted to add something.
I would like to comment, but Alderman, go ahead, and I can comment after you're done.
If it's related, that's fine.
It's related to parking, so a comment that Ms. Baker made and also that Mary Beth made regarding planning for that. This is a discussion that Mary Beth and I have had since we've both been here. And as she just said, it's really, you know, in the big picture, it's a nice problem to have, in the sense that the library is so well-used in that area. And so what we've looked at is, anytime we've seen even the hint of a development idea in that area, we've tried to look at that and how we can improve it. As an example, when Lizardro Museum was looking for alternate places, we worked with them to see what can we possibly do in that area in addition to parking, whether it's a deck or something else, to try to accommodate everybody that's there. And as you know, we own the 180 Park Building, and so the idea of using that in some way has come into play. Obviously, the post office still hinders development in that area. So it is something that we've looked at. What we've, what we have somewhat rebuffed is the idea of just paving over that green, that green space that the city owns, because once that's gone, that's gone. So we've, we've tried to stay away from that, looking towards a bigger development for the area.
Makes sense. Yes.
One other question. So with that level of traffic, I mean, that's amazing. Actually, it's pretty, pretty amazing. Is there, is there any security considerations with, that's a lot of people, right? So is that factor into, you know, is there security onsite? How, how is that dealt with?
So we have security guards in the, during school year. We have them there at nighttime after school and on the weekends. And our biggest defense and what, what we have instructed staff to do and what we train over and over again is just to pick up the phone and call 911. And I will tell you that that's our best security, and we have called the police here in this town many times, nothing to be too alarmed at, about, but we do, and I have to say our police response is fantastic. And kudos to our police department, too. I have seen them handle situations with patrons in such an empathetic way, and it's always been so wonderful when we call them out. They're, they're good to people, and they really help us out. So they're there quickly. We have panic buttons installed at all of our public desks that go right to DoCom that then alert the 911 system, and we also train our staff. We go over it all the time about just picking up the phone and calling 911 if there's any sort of safety issue, and our police here in this town come right away. We've had great response from them, again, and great support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Bram.
Just to stay on the parking topic, is the busyness of Tuesday and/or Sunday or any other day, is it all year round, or is it seasonal? Do you see more patrons in the winter versus the summer, or the reverse, or can you speak to that at all?
Kind of all year round. It would be, in the summertime, maybe a tiny bit alleviated because... It would be, in the summertime, maybe a tiny bit alleviated, because more people walk and ride their bikes to the library, but then we have the very active summer reading program, which checks about 5,000 kids, so you think about all that. They're not there at the same time, but they're at the library often. So, there really isn't any real downtime for the library. I know that sounds kind of crazy, but it's true, maybe over the holidays occasionally here and there, but the summer is very busy for us, because the kids are out of school, and we also do plan a lot of programs, because the kids are out of school, and that's when they're using the library. And then the winter time, I mean, any of the school year is busy with a different set of people studying and using the library, a lot of business people using the library. So, there isn't really any real, oh, it's not so busy this time. I would say Friday nights, of course, are the least busy time. Yeah, there's no doubt about that, and that stands to reason. So, you know, we're really trying to manage some of the programming we're doing, again, in some of the meeting rooms, and to alleviate some of the parking. We also did, and I know I told you this a couple of years ago, contract with the art museum, which has been fantastic. I can't imagine what we would do right now if we didn't have that parking, because we're using it to capacity sometimes. So, that was a really good thing that we were able to get, and if, trust me, if there was another parking lot that I could contract for over there, I would try to do it. And the other time that it can be really busy is when the kids start back at school at the college. But we actively monitor that situation, because we will see kids parking and going to school, and unfortunately, hey, if I had a big parking lot, I would let them park there, it would be great, but we don't and we can't. So, we have, we ticket them. It does, there is a sign that says we tow, and we haven't done that, but we do ticket because we can't have the kids parking there. But that usually quiets down after the first couple of weeks of school, so.
That actually lends me to the follow-up of was there, and I think you already answered it, an opportunity for maybe employee parking at Elmhurst College parking lot or something off-site, which would free it up, but I think you already answered that.
Yeah, and we thought about that, too. Definitely not at Elmhurst College, because they have their own issues over there. We're in contact with them, especially in the beginning of the school year, to talk to them about making sure they're putting notices in the paper for their students and telling their students about where to park, and they are, they're very good neighbors. But they have issues with parking, too, and I know they're contracting out at different lots. They actually have a shuttle service, and maybe you know this, that goes from the Coles parking lot over there. So, we did, and our staff parks in the city lot, two lots over, a lot over from the office building, the park building, we're not that parking spot, but the one over there. So, we actually use that parking, pay the city for that parking, but we actually have thought about, well, do we have our staff park even further away and use that lot? But that's, you know, I mean, yeah, there's logistical issues and financial issues with everything we think of, so. We're just, I think what we brought it up today was just if anybody else has any ideas, we talked with Jim, Jim and I have been in contact, like he said, but we're always looking for creative solutions, so.
Any other questions? Marcia had mentioned that the makeery is just a little over a year old. Any changes, success stories, things? I mean, I've been down there, it's fantastic. It's kind of like the world of wonder down there.
Yeah.
Any changes you're making, or what's been more successful than others, or?
Very successful, the whole thing. We've been adding a few more interesting pieces of equipment, some of them based on patron, patron suggestions, which has been great. We have some quilt die-cut machine now that cuts out quilt pieces six at a time and perfect size for quilters. If you're a quilter, you would know what I'm talking about. The laser cutter has been incredibly successful, that's the thing that cuts wood and glass and things like that, and we've worked out reservation systems for that, because in the beginning, everything was just walk-in, and people were just coming in and not being able to use the machine, so they have two-hour time slots. It's really been an exciting place. When you say that, it really brings a smile to my face. I actually do do a little shift down there once a week, just to see what's going on, and it's truly an exciting space, and people are so happy to be down there DIYing. Granted, they're frustrated sometimes, but they're also very happy with their projects, and you see a real sense of sharing. You walk up to people and you say, what are you working on? And then they tell you what they're working on, and you tell them what you're working on, and kind of no place else in the library does that really exist unless you're there for a meeting with people, because you wouldn't just walk up to people and say, hey, what are you working on? It'd be weird. But down there, it's what happens, and it's really neat to see, and I can't tell you the different exciting things that are happening, people creating things, people kind of starting businesses down there on their creations, and people feel good. They just feel good when they make something with their own hands, and they're proud of it, and it's been very exciting. So, new machinery, new reservation systems, and just getting more and more people down there. The other thing that's been really interesting to me are the ages of people down there. So, I think immediately when people hear about a space like that, they think it's for kids, and really, most of this equipment down there is not for kids. It's much more advanced than that, you really have to think about it, you have to study it, you have to come prepared. So, we do get kids down there with their parents, but it's parents, it's moms, the mom was in there on her, she had her husband, her husband came home from work, and she had two hours in the makeery, and she was creating a costume for her daughter, and she was just so excited. She had a three-month-old at home and a two-year-old, and this was her day out in the makeery. And we're seeing elderly people coming down there with their friends to use that quilting machine, and there's a gentleman who's down there regularly, and he must, he's making these gorgeous intricate boxes on the laser cutter. So, it's really a different age range of people, it's, it's just, it's a very exciting space. If you're ever interested in coming, if you haven't seen it, if you want a personal tour, give me a call. We have help down there all the time, we have people to assist you with your project, and we can also direct you to spaces where you can start your project, so.
Alderman Bram?
Yes, thanks. Mary Beth, you just mentioned something that reminded me of one other question. You mentioned the reservation system for the makeery. So, I don't know if you know where I'm going to go with my question, but meeting room reservations compared to dialing the library and trying to schedule it over the phone. I know, I believe last budget cycle, we talked about it a little bit. Can you kind of update us on what, where we're at with putting those online, so we're not placing phone calls and possibly playing phone tag on that?
We're just about there, I promise you. We have a new reservation system, it took a while for the company to develop it, but we're implementing it kind of now behind the scenes, and our next goal is to make that meeting room reservation system go live for patrons, because I completely agree with you. It's absolutely inefficient for you as patrons to be calling for staff to be going back and forth with you on, you know, first of all, you're kind of looking puzzled, but they.
Well, I'm puzzled, because I've been using the online.
Dibs, you've been using dibs for the study rooms, yes, yes. That is great, we've had that up for a while, but this is for the actual larger meeting rooms. So, when a patron wants to reserve one of these larger meeting rooms, they have to call the library, fill out a form, call the library, and then they can't see if a date's available or not. So, oftentimes, their date's not available, so they're going back and forth with their group or with the staff member, well, is this date available, is that date available? So, it's just, I agree with you, a completely archaic and inefficient way to book meeting rooms. So, this new software, we do have it now finally, it is, we are in the training session with staff, and hopefully very soon, like I'm going to say, within the next month or two, it'll be up for patrons, too. Promise, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much for your time, thank you very much for your dedication. Congratulations again on the five-star rating, again, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, as Chief Ruth makes his way up to the table, I ask everybody to turn to page 122.
Yep.
This is where the police budget starts.
As we move now towards the police department budget, it's going to be on page 122. Just wanted to take a moment and kind of give you a brief snapshot in terms of where we are with regard to calls for service for the year, crime, reported crime offenses, a few other anecdotal numbers, and this is going to be from January 1st to October 31st. So far, the police department's responded to 14,167 911 calls for service so far, and our total activity level is at 42,0016. What this equates to is about a one-and-a-half percent increase from year-to-date last year. And of course, the end of the year isn't over yet, so we're going to have to see how, you know, the final numbers finally shake out. But what's consistent is we're seeing a slight upward tick in overall activity levels by the police department and 911 calls for service. We're up a total of about 8% since 2014, so it's been, it's been slight increases, but the trend continues to go upward. Overall, crime is slightly lower as compared last year-to-date. And I'll just have some percentage numbers, and they can be misleading because of the small number of incidents that we have, but sex offenses are down 41% year-to-date, aggravated assault and battery is down 35%, burglary for motor vehicle is down 22%, motor vehicle theft is down 61%, criminal damage to property is down 7%, and deadly weapons offenses are down 64%. So, but we have seen some slight increases. Robbery is up with one, and so far, year-to-date, 2017, we had, we've had seven this calendar year compared to six last year at the same point in time. And residential burglary is up by three as compared to 2017. Narcan deployments, overdoses, that seems to be down a little bit this year as compared to previous years. In 2016, we had 31 overdoses with 12 narcan deployments, and that was just narcan by the police department, not the fire service paramedics. 2017, it was 14 overdoses and seven narcan deployments. And so far, year-to-date, I don't have the overdose numbers, but I have the narcan deployments, and the narcan deployments are down to six for 2018. We think that may be due in part to, not that the drug usage is going down, but I think with the fire department's medic one is getting on the scene quicker than the first patrol officers, and if it's a narcan situation, the medics have the ability to deploy narcan as they go along. So far, this calendar year, 2018 is, as the police department has changed from a senior agency with a lot of tenure and longevity to a much younger agency. So, as a result, our training to our police officers has increased, and also in terms of the supervision and the leadership of the police department. So far, year-to-date, our officers have received a minimum of 60 hours of training in 2018. So, the, we looked at all the sworn officers on the department, and the least amount that one of the officers had for 2018 is 60 hours. That's up compared to 50 hours from last year, the whole year, and then 40 hours the year before. So, we've looked at training and tried to make it very strategic in terms of what we're training our officers on, the type of situations that they would be exposed to, and some of the current trends that we're seeing across, you know, across the country, and we're seeing here, of course, in Elmhurst. We hosted some in-service trainings throughout the year, and one of the, one of the things that we put together right around the first of the year was a de-escalation and smarter policing for changing times. So, we brought in some outside people, professionals, to come in and discuss some of the de-escalation issues and some of the de-escalation strategies that we, that will help us handle situations. You know, there's many people out there with mental illness or on drugs and other substances, and, you know, our mere presence can at times inflame the problem. So, we want our officers to try to utilize some new strategies that are out there to try to de-escalate the situation. It's less harmful to the officers, to the public, and to the person that we're dealing with. So, I was pleased to see us do that. And some of the leadership, executive leadership training for the command staff and the supervisory staff, our officers now are receiving training from Northwestern University upon promotion to sergeant. They go to a two-week supervision school from Northwestern, and then after the completion of that, and then we get them some time in grade, we send them to a 10-week Staff and Command class at Northwestern University. That's the second part. And then the third part is something we just started doing the last few years, is called the Executive Management Program, EMP, and it's the third component that Northwestern offers for their leadership awards. And we sent two people this year, so they're going to, they're going to be fully complete. We've got one, Deputy Chief Tannahill completed, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief McLean completed it last year, and as we speak, Deputy Chief Tannahill is at the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia, for a 10-week leadership and executive management training course. So, training our people is a high priority for us, it helps us provide better service to our community, and reduces our exposure to harm, to potential risk in terms of liability, and it just improves the quality of service that we continue to provide. Jumping now into the budget, our goal this year was to try to have a flat budget as best we could, and we met that, that goal with the exception of just a few areas, and I'll bring those out to your attention, and again, that'll be on page 122. Under contractual services under 30-18 DuCom, you'll see an increase of about 3.5%, and that's a result of a new reporting system, software reporting system, records management system that DuCom is rolling out through the DuPage, Dujess, DuPage Criminal Justice Information Authority, and it's part of their records management system. It's due to go online in 2019, but we had received our first payment for 2018 for $54,000. That bill has yet to come, so if it doesn't come by January, we're going to encumber those funds, so we can pay the bill in 2019. We expect to see an increase of $75,255 to get that RMS system up and running with about a $19,643 interface, a one-time interface system to get the fingerprint system, which is called LiveScan, our property inventory system called The Beast, so if we take any evidence into custody, we need to, we need to keep track of that and have that follow us as well. So, those systems need to communicate, and they need to interface with each other, and that will be a, that will be one of the increases that we will be experiencing for 2019. One of the other areas, very, very minor, contract staffing, 3092 is a 3% increase, and that, we just, we put that in as a, as a, an adjustment for wages. We currently have one contract employee in the records division who's a full-time person through the contract agency, there's no benefits or anything paid to that, so that's one of the other slight increases you see. There's some other decreases throughout, where we began to look and see if we can operate more effectively under 40-01 ammunition. We were able to reduce the budget, and under 40-31, under minor equipment, we're also able to reduce the budget by $4,500. 8098, under, under other expenditures, we, under miscellaneous equipment, we, there's $250,000 identified in 2018, and then also 250 for 2019. And the purpose for that was to have the city covered by LPRs, license plate reader cameras, and we're slightly behind in this year's acquisition of the LPRs, because we've been looking at installation. looking at installation on some of the state routes. And the Illinois Department of Transportation, we're hopeful to try to allow them, to have them allow us to utilize some of the infrastructure for the cameras. And when I say infrastructure, I talk about the poles, the electricity, to be able to mount the cameras on the existing poles. If not, then we have to rely upon Public Works to install poles, install electricity at locations to try to pick up close enough to the intersection. And so there was some feeling through the LPR vendor that maybe the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, would be more receptive to allowing municipalities to utilize some of those, some of the infrastructures, because LPRs are becoming, you know, very, very popular now. And they've served as a very good investigative tool to many law enforcement agencies. So as we speak, as of today, they're not allowing us to utilize that. We're going to wait and see, hopefully with maybe some new leadership down in Springfield. Their attitude on that may change. If not, then we're ready to proceed and work with the city to have poles and electric installed so we can continue with our project to use LPRs to help create a safer environment for our community. We have been using asset forfeiture funds for certain types of items and purchases we're required to follow guidelines set forth by the Department of Justice on it. But some of the things that we utilize asset forfeiture funds for is the K-9 program, the purchase of body armor for our officers. They have a certain life expectancy, and they have to be replaced every couple of years. The DARE program is funded through the asset forfeiture program. Our bike patrol program is funded through that. We were able to purchase a car this calendar year. Some of the department training that we've been fortunate to send some of our people to, that can be a little pricey, but it's something that we wanted to do, and it was excellent use for the asset forfeiture for that. The SRO training program that the SROs get sent to, and our involvement in FIAAT, which is a combined mutual aid assistance with some of our surrounding communities adjacent to us in DuPage County and then a little bit to the south end of DuPage County. This is just an overview to touch on a couple of items, and I would open it up to any questions that anyone may have.
I'll start it off just by saying, thanking the chief and everyone in the department. Mary Beth touched on it a little bit, but certainly I think all of Elmhurst feels safe with you at the helm and the police officers that represent the department every day. I truly appreciate that. But I want to jump on something that you mentioned toward the end there. For the license plate reader, I know that navigating the seven thousand possible governmental bodies in the state of Illinois can be difficult. What's the reason that IDOT is not allowing this, or are you just not getting an answer?
Up until now, their response has been pretty consistent, is they want total control over their assets. They don't want anybody else to change, to modify, to tinker with, or anything like that. As I understand it, several years ago, the lights going out at eighty-three and North Avenue tended to be problematic, and they were looking to have a battery backup system purchased by the city to be installed. So in the event that there's a major power outage, it's clearly the biggest volume of traffic that we have in the city. It's probably one of the top ten in the state. And as my understanding was, it was a very difficult time to navigate through that just to get IDOT to allow us to be able to install something that was going to benefit the people of the state of Illinois. So just, I think it's that mindset of, we've always done it this way, so.
Okay. Well, certainly thinks something we can address with our legislators, but not surprised, but disappointed. Additional questions or comments for Chief Ruth? Alvin Brennan?
Hi, Chief. So you mentioned a one-and-a-half percent increase in volume. Does current staffing levels naturally absorb those increases, or does that result in the form of overtime? Or does it simply tax the current staffing levels?
You know, it depends on the type of call, really. It depends on that. I think, you know, some of the things that are helpful to us are these, as much as they can hurt us sometimes. You know, we tell people to call us to report suspicious circumstances or activity, or if somebody needs help. So we encourage people to call, so they are. We absorb those volume of calls just as a staffing that we currently have, and we're able to make that work. You know, I think one of the things that makes Elmhurst unique is that we take a little extra time with people, and we try to solve the problem rather than get in and get out. And so we're going to dedicate a little bit more time to address an issue, to resolve a problem, and give somebody a little extra service, whether they're residents here or not. You know, we try to provide that. So the slight increase that we see, yeah, we absorb that.
Alvin York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So oddly enough, the questions I'm going to ask you really have nothing to do with the budget. I'm kind of interested in your narrative. So it was, I guess, kind of news to me that, and the numbers have been updated, you said fourteen thousand calls. A third of them are calls, and then two-thirds of them are where we instigate activity, police activity. Is that normal? I mean, or am I misreading that? It says twenty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven were police-initiated activities. I'm assuming that's simple things like you pull over somebody on St. Charles or something like that, right? But is that normal, that two-thirds of things are initiated by the police? And I'm not being critical, I'm just asking a question.
Actually, that's probably pretty consistent. Our officers record more of their daily activity than many others, many other communities. We ask our officers to get out of their patrol car and walk around, walk the downtown. We'll have the officers on bike patrol, and we'll get them out on bicycles during the summertime months to get them out to do that in between calls for service. Bar checks are pretty frequently. We want our officers to stop in the liquor establishments and just stop in, say hello, take a look, see that everything's fine and everything's in order. And we capture that data. So we're looking at that self-initiated activity, the traffic stops the officers make, calls for service. So we want to be able to capture all of the workload that they're doing so we can analyze it, see if we're getting a positive result from it, whether it be a reduction in crime, a reduction in calls for service, all of those things. So that's where those numbers come from.
Okay. That was just interesting to me. I have a couple more. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what are nine-hundred-and-six crime prevention hazard notices? What is a crime prevention hazard notice?
Where are you getting that data from?
Page fifty, bullet point number five.
Just want to make sure I'm addressing the right.
No, that's fine. And these are all good, I mean, I think these are all good things. I'm just kind of curious as to what they are.
Right.
I'm going to ask, because I think I got one of those crime prevention notices.
Right.
If you drive by and your garage door's up, you got a little sticker that says idiot. That's what mine said.
I took your bicycle?
I tried not to take it personal. Don't do this again. We're keeping an eye out for you, but you should be a little more cautious.
It can be the garage door opener at two in the morning. Sometimes it's somebody who leaves their dome light on in a car parking lot with the car unlocked. If we see a car, you know, as we walk through the parking lot, or if we're driving through the lot, and we see the car door is open or ajar, it will secure it for them, but we also want to leave them a note, letting them know that, A, it was the police that locked your car. Hopefully, the keys were in your pocket and not inside. But, and it's a good reminder, letting know, A, the police department was there, and B, that we've kind of put you on notice to let you know that we were there taking care of it. So those are going to be the crime prevention hazard notices.
I'm really pleased to see the huge increase in attendance for the neighborhood roll calls. I know that was a program you guys rolled out a number of years ago, but that's always exciting to know. Alderman, Toledo, and I attended a couple in our ward this year. My final question, and then I'll stop hogging the thing, is the sustained traffic enforcement program campaign. You list all the things that we find there, impaired drivers, three-hundred citations. How does Elmhurst compare in, that's a state program, correct? That's a state funded program?
It's a grant-funded program, yes.
So how do our results compare to other neighboring communities and stuff like that? I mean, because of our location to interstates and so on and so forth, I would expect that we have higher-than-usual numbers, but I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, we're probably going to be in the top third across the state. And how they, basically what they do is, if you're involved in these grants and your activity level is low, you're not offered the grant the next year, or you see a significant reduction in the benefit. We've continued to see increases in the benefit, and we've continued to be invited to participate in these things. So we're in the upper third.
That said, I'd just like to say, thanks for all the work you do. I always ask the deputy chiefs, have you caught all the bad guys today? And you guys solve a hell of a lot of crimes, so that's awesome. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, you know, we're very fortunate. The detective commander, Len Culpeck, has got, we call it the swarm effect. So if there's something that occurs, a crime that occurs in the city, we get on it really fast. We don't wait for the paperwork to come there. The detectives are monitoring the radio. They'll respond to the scene, they'll get on it quick, and we throw a lot of resources at the problem quickly. And we found that the solvability factor for that increases exponentially by our involvement on the front end instead of the back end. So we've been fortunate with that, are real pleased with the work that our officers are doing. They're doing a great job.
Other questions? Alvin Bram?
Thank you. A handful of questions here, first being, I want to touch back on the license plate readers. You already spoke to it, but I do see it in the budget for capital expenditures this year or this upcoming fiscal year. Does that mean at the end of two thousand and nineteen that we will have rolled out all the license plate readers that we deem necessary at the appropriate locations? I believe we had an offline conversation, and I think that was my takeaway back then. Is that an accurate statement?
That's our goal, and, you know, it really comes down to money. And if we get some cooperation from IDOT to be able to utilize some of their infrastructure, that would save us some significant money that would help bring this number down. When we projected the number at the time for budgetary purposes, we did not factor in, you know, IDOT giving us any assistance, that we were going to have to utilize city staff, city resources to install poles, to pull electric and do all those things. Well, that costs, you know, that's going to cost more money. So if at the end of the project, you know, there's still some funding available, we can, A, return it back to the city, or if there's some additional locations that we can put up LPRs that we didn't, you know, anticipate originally, that's our goal to do that. But first things first, I think we want to get, you know, the first step of the two-step process.
So with that, it's interesting that we're having some challenges with IDOT, because in Public Works Committee just tonight, we talked about an IDOT IGA in relation to the two ninety-four expressway and off-ramp. So there has been, or potentially in a week, is cooperation with IDOT with an intergovernmental agreement. So I hope that there would be some same resolution there. Just to not go too deep into that, I mean, we're talking about sharing expenditures with IDOT at a certain percentage. So they should be willing, I would think, just seeing this IGA that we talked about this evening, to do the same thing with the LPRs for us. DUCOM, I mean, obviously, the numbers are going up. Is DUCOM seeing additional communities added over the last year, or is it staying the same? And are they then leveling out the cost for the rest of the communities?
There were several communities that were added two thousand and seventeen, end of two thousand and sixteen, beginning of seventeen. But, you know, there's no more agencies that are joining up DUCOM. I think everybody's just about committed in DuPage County.
And if I can add to that, so a couple of years ago, there was a big push to consolidate all the PS apps, the communication nine-one-one points in the county, and I think it's down to four, I believe, with Addison's with a major expansion. And some of the smaller agencies from DUCOM moved over to Addison. And then, as chief said, some joined DUCOM as well that had their own independent dispatches. So I don't have the number in front of me. I can't say it exactly evened out. And then, you know, DUCOM moved to a new location and expanded significantly, which they needed. So that's adding to the cost that you see in the budget.
Thank you. My last question is just in regards to staffing. I read the notes on how many sworn are in the budget, sixty-eight full-time sworn, fifteen part-time, twenty-three civilian, et cetera. Are we staffed at that level? I know it's budgeted for that level. Are we staffed at that level?
Currently, no. We've, we are short two police officers. We just gave a test probably six weeks ago. Board of Fire and Police Commission will be meeting within the next week to two weeks to advance the first ten or fifteen candidates through the process. So our goal, we've got two seats reserved for the January academy to fill the two vacancies for a full-time police officer. Hopefully, we can get there.
Thanks. Any other, Alvin Levin?
Not really a question, but a comment, because we've talked about it in our committee. And one of the big issues, there isn't a budget, like a million-something for the cooling system, which, according to the write-up, and appropriately so, is being held back until we do a study to see what our police facility will be in the future. And it's an issue that the Public Works Committee and Public Safety has taken a close look at, and we're kind of in the middle of it. I think at some point, maybe Finance Committee will have to get involved, unless it's a free police department, I don't know. But it's really, without belaboring it, it's a big issue that we're going to face because it's going to be a big capital expense. And at some point, probably not right away, but when we get into it, I would encourage all of the council members to take the opportunity to take a tour of the facility so that we all fully understand what the issue is in terms of when the residents say, we build a police department, what is it, ninety-two police stations, somewhere around there, and now we're going to build it again. And there are reasons, I won't go into them because we have more to cover, but that's a big issue for our committee.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, I think if we can get through Public Works for tonight, that would be an appropriate goal for us, considering the time.
Sounds great. Appreciate your awareness of the time.
Thank you. Tonight-
Thank you, tonight. We're not going to go into a lot of what we've done the past year. We'll focus on what we're moving forward on through the upcoming year. But for those of you who've driven in town at all this year, you've seen the work we've been doing or overseen. If you've driven around the south side of town, you really have not been able to drive anywhere south of the CN tracks. It's pretty much been torn up.
Let's just put it out there right now, huh, Howard?
So, under, on page 125, of course, this is the admin and engineering part of the budget. This past year, the two big projects which we're continuing to work on, of course, are the two stormwater projects, both the Phase One and the Phase Two. Phase Two, the one at Jackson School, is nearing completion. We're just waiting for the pumps to be installed at this point. And Phase One, which is the Messiah Royal Oak, we continue, Royal York, sorry, we continue to, with the excavation and the pipe, which will be installed shortly. So, that's moving forward. One of the other things we did vary this year between engineering and public works, is we worked on in the phase of the metro station, the contractor, which we'll be bringing to the Public Works and Building Committee shortly, which consultant, we want to move forward on that project. So, moving into the other projects we did real quick, again, you look at Poplar from Park to Valette, that was completed this year. We did some streets up in the industrial area, and of course, if you look out front, York Street has been torn up for several weeks now. And we do have the assurance that it will be final surface placed before Thanksgiving. So, we're expecting that to be done by the end of this week, and then striping early next week. Some of the things we're looking into FY19 on road projects, we are looking at doing York from the UP track south of Palmer Drive. So, we're looking to kind of do the same project south of the track next year. And with federal dollars, we'll be working on Spring Road from St. Charles up to Valette, and then also on West from St. Charles to the UP railroad tracks. And again, another set of streets up in the industrial park area. And this is in addition to the normal resurfacing program, the patching program, sidewalk programs. And then, towards the end of the year, we'll be starting the design of the metro station project. The reason I say end of the year is we've just found out from IDOT, since we're using so much federal dollars, that their review process, once we pick our consultant as a city, their review process to give us the final, can take up to eight to 10 months to get through IDOT to give us final approval to actually start the project. So, if we move forward and get it approved through our committee and the council in January, it's possible we won't even be able to start any work on it till August or September of next year. And that's any work that we do on the project. So, that'll be coming up. Some of the main increases in this, in 4098, other supplies, we're up $25,000. Part of that is that we know the sustainability plan was recently approved, so we threw some money in there just in case there's any major capital projects we need to buy, you know, recycling bins in the city hall lobby, stuff at Public Works, stuff throughout the city. So, that's, we just kind of have a placeholder for that. And then, we do have, in the vehicles, 8006, we have, we're up $32,000, and we do have three replacement vehicles, and one small pickup truck, and two small hybrid escapes for the engineering staff to be looked at. Do you want me to go part by part, or probably easiest, if there's any questions on this part of it, or?
Oh, just through page 29 in this, 129 in this case?
Up to 127.
I'm sorry, 127. I'd say go all the way through, and I'll ask Alderman to hold their questions.
The next one we have is on page 128, Public Works Streets. This is our street and alley maintenance. This past year, we completed our third year of cleaning all inlets in main pipes throughout the city, the storm sewer. Some major programs we look at, this year, this has a lot to do with also our snow removal project. We've recently hired an assistant due to our retirement, who comes to us with a lot of experience from another town, using a lot of anti-icing methods. So, we're hoping to utilize some of those ideas with our snow removal. When you look at this, again, this includes all of our paving of our streets, it includes our reclemite programs, the parking lot ceiling, so those are all included in the regular budget. The street sweeping numbers, pavement maintenance, crack filling, all pretty much stay the same. One of the main things we do have in this year's program, the 4098 account, while it's only up 40,000 or $60,000, we are including funds or requesting funds of $150,000 for a pavement management system. What we're looking at is, currently, the streets we pick to look at are strictly done by street department staff and engineering staff, of which streets to do every year. With the new procedures, part of it is because the new procedures that's being required to request federal funding for any of our local streets, is that you actually have a computerized pavement management system to evaluate both the condition of the pavements and the projected failing of those. So, we are looking to add that, and that'll give us a...
That's 3098, not 4098.
Oh, sorry, 3098.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Mistype.
Thank you.
So, that'll give us a comprehensive look at our streets, and then give us a plan every year based on our funding, where we should best spend our money, a more overall look at everything. The other we have is 8022. We do have land improvements. We're requesting $400,000 for the, I'm sorry, $435,000 for the west side of Palmer Drive. We completed the, sorry, the east side. We completed the west side this past year. The east side is not as extensive work that needs to be done, but we are requesting to finish that up. And then, we're also looking at funds to replace the landscaping around the city hall here, both around the fountain, the plaza out, and then also the frontage along York Street. So, those are the main things out of that portion of the budget. We also have, sorry, we also have three vehicles that are being replaced, three dump trucks, and then we're also looking at replacing our hot box, which is what we used to bring asphalt around. Those are all included in the budget. Page 131, that's our snow removal and ice control. Again, we finished, this past year, we finished a salt dome. We used to only be able to hold 1,700 ton, we can now hold 5,500 ton of salt, which is, you know, close to double of what we use in a typical season. So, we're really locked into what we need for salt for the year. One of the other things we're looking at is with the Illinois Toll Authority doing both the Elgin O'Hare and future 294 expressways, expanding those. Part of their environmental impact was that for the amount of salt and chlorides they were going to use, they needed to look at reducing their impact on the environment, Salt Creek particularly. So, what they've come up with a program, and through our Salt Creek Work Group, is that they are actually going out and funding anti-icing equipment in multiple towns. So, we're in line this year to receive some money to put different controls and spreaders on some of our larger trucks. And then, we're also applying for funds for our own brine-making equipment at the garage from them, and then also a skid-mounted tanker truck that we could actually spray the anti-icing on the streets. So, we're in line to receive it, but we're working out the final numbers with the toll rate right now to see if they'll fund that in its entirety. Page 133, forestry. From when we sent the cab out to when we did now, there's one change we'd like to highlight. One of our cabs had for First Street landscaping, we had originally put $100,000 in there. We've since split that to $50,000 for 2019, $50,000 for 2020. So, that, we need to change in the budget here.
Howard, what line item is that?
That is 3034. So, that's landscape maintenance. One item on that, we're also going out to bid this year with our new contract. So, we've kind of adjusted our numbers to make sure we have enough funding for our new landscape contract coming in. Our tree trimming is up this year, $25,000, and that's, we're looking at our new numbers coming in, and that's to keep all of our trees on a seven-year trim cycle. One of the things we're looking at also, we always like to bring forward, it's always raised, is our elm tree, where we are with elm and ash trees. Our elm trees, back in 2004, we started out with 2,813. We've since removed 1,474, and we have 1,339 elm trees that are on city property that are still remaining in place. Ash trees, we started with 2,310 in 2009. We've removed 1,871, so we only have 439 of those left in the parkways. So, those, we're making some good headway on, and those are actually failing faster than the elm trees. So, we're doing a lot of removal on those. And that's the major part of the forestry budget. Next, page 136, electrical. One of the things you'll see, some increases in our electrical budget. If you've looked, we've done a lot of painting up and down throughout the downtown here, along First Street, along Palmer Drive, we've painted all the light standards black, so we've refreshed the look of that. One of the things we're finding, both along, mostly along North Avenue, Lake Street, and St. Charles Road, is the steel light poles that were put up, were actually corroding from the inside out. So, when we've been going through the last couple of years, we had painters come in, they'd sandblast them, and then prime them and repaint them. About a year and a half ago, we got to a point on North Avenue where they started sandblasting them, and called us out there and said, you need to take these poles down immediately, on a certain number of them. They were actually rusting out where there was almost nothing holding the pole up anymore. So, what we've done over the last year and a half is we've kind of ultrasound every pole to make sure that they're structural. We need to keep moving forward on that, and we have a plan for replacement. But we do have an increase of $100,000 for new light poles, both along North Avenue and then several other streets who are refining this failure. St. Charles Road, west of the Salt Creek, we just recently had to replace six to eight poles there, because they were completely failed. Some of the other items we have in there, we have $110,000 for a replacement F-450 in the electrical department, and then we are also looking at $35,000 for a electric scissors man lift, so we can use it both in the garage and out on the street. Moving on, I think we hit Refuge. Refuge, of course, this past year, we signed a new five-year contract with Republic. We're moving forward with that. The new items that we've moved, we brought forward in the last month or two is the 35-gallon toter. We've had about 135 residents so far who are taking advantage of going to that smaller bin. And the food scrap composting through the rental from Republic, we don't have those numbers, but we are getting some calls on the interest in that. So, we'll be getting from, the numbers from them shortly of how many people are moving forward with that. Not related directly to Refuge, but we did approve, if you remember, at a recent council meeting, an e-waste recycling event, which we'll be holding at the Public Works Garage quarterly, starting on January 26th, and then every three months on the fourth Saturday, we'll hold that at the Public Works Garage. Moving on to page 140, building maintenance. One of the major items, line item 3014, our custodial contractual, we do show an increase of about $63,000 in that line item. We're almost, almost close to a 70% to 80% increase in that. One of the problems is, this past year, we were finishing up a three-year contract, we actually had to get rid of that contractor, because they weren't performing. We went to the next low bidder, who was still interested in doing the work, and they're really not performing as well. So, we're really tightening up the specs and expect that we're actually going to have to pay a significant increase to get some decent cleaning done of City Hall throughout the year, and the police station. Building maintenance in 5001, we do have $55,000 to correct some plumbing issues that we've experienced here at City Hall. We have to reduce some of the interior plumbing, so that's in there. And then, 8006 vehicles, we do have a pickup truck and a van to be replaced in that location. Central equipment fleet, page 142. One of the big items we had this year moving forward was our, the propane fueling station, which we had installed. We do have 14 vehicles that are outfitted with propane, we're seeing very good success using that. And right now, on an equivalent basis, propane is running about 35 to 40 cents less per gallon than gasoline. So, we're definitely seeing a better miles per gallon with that, better horsepower, and we're actually seeing, we're finding we can extend the service, routine service on it, because it's burning cleaner fuel, that we're getting some great benefits out of that. So, we do have, however, some significant increases, though, in the budget. Diesel fuel, we're shown is going to be up about, we're estimating $50,000. And in gasoline, we're expecting to be up about $100,000. Again, that's just to the price increases we're seeing coming out of the refineries to be delivered to us. Some of the other items, oil and grease is up, other supplies are up about 5,000 each. The compressed natural gas line item is 4075, that's where we buy the, 4074, that's where we buy our propane from. One of the major increases we have is that we are looking at about $67,000 to convert an additional 13 vehicles this coming year to start using the propane. But that is contingent upon us receiving an EPA loan, which we've applied for. So, that's, we're hopefully be moving forward on that. And then, in building maintenance, we do have 5001. We do have $50,000 for two outside high-speed doors that we're working on. And then, we're spending about $18,000 for fuel monitoring equipment of our actual tanks in the ground, the ones that check for leaks on a daily basis for that. One of the things we do want to remind the committee of, is when we look at the expenditures down at the garage, whether the high-speed doors, roof repairs, which will be coming up in the near future, any of our parking lot programs, remember that the park district pays 25% of those costs to us through their rental agreements. So, any of this work that we do, including vehicle lifts and some of those other items, that they share in 25% of the cost. So, any questions? I guess we could stop here before we get to public benefits. You want to go through public benefits real quick?
Yep.
Okay. Public benefits, the major programs we have looking at next year, we do every year put in $50,000, that's on cab page 55. That's if we have any neighborhoods or individual streets that come to us with a request for sidewalks. We do not have any in line, we haven't had any improved in the last year or two, but we do know the people off in the Glade area, where they're having some questions about cut-through traffic, are close to getting enough signatures. So, that one might be one moving forward on. We have on cab page 56, miscellaneous drainage improvements. We're requesting $100,000. That is kind of a new line item, a new program that we came up with this year. There we, oh, I'm sorry, that's ditch maintenance, I'm sorry, I was looking at a different one. That's the ditches we have in town, we have both down in the south end towards the Public Works Garage, but then up through the industrial park, we have a ditch that runs east-west through there that needs a lot of work. So, that includes money, $100,000 every year for that. We do have, again, Phase One for the Route 83 pedestrian bridge. We haven't exactly picked out where that would go yet, but again, it's planned or thought of to be between North Avenue and Lake Street. We did look at possibly trying to team with the Forest Reserve District to help fund some of that, and they really said to us, they have no funds available to assist us in the Phase One. So, the 140,000 is our, would be our share if we want to move forward with the Phase One, which we really need to do if we want to look at any federal or state funding down the road for that project. We're continuing also to carry over the Phase One for the Prairie Path Pedestrian Bridge. That project's kind of, we look at every now and then, but we do still have the money in there to move that forward. One of the items we do have in here is $100,000 for our large deck bikes parking. We went in last year with seven other communities, including the county, and were able to get a grant for bicycle parking facilities. So, this one that we had put in ours for us is, there's a little green space between the sidewalk and the large parking deck. So, we did get federal funds to go ahead and put a pad in, bike racks, and then a shelter over it. The reason we're at 100,000, Elmhurst, we decided to become the lead agency on this project to make things go a little bit smoother. So, we will be the lead agency for this entire project for the seven communities. Once the project moves forward, they will pay us back, and then the state, the federal grant will also come to us. So, basically, we're funding the money for the other communities, but it's making it go a little bit smoother on that process. The last thing we have in public benefit, of course, is the metro station on cab page 59. We do have projected originally to spend about 2.2 million next year in the Phase Two engineering, starting the, both the visioning, the site plan, and the architectural design. Once we get the final going, we're moving it, we'll probably postpone some of that into 2020, but we do have the amount to get moving forward on Phase Two engineering this next coming year on that project. Next one, MFT, which is on page 185. There's really no major changes. We do have our salt purchases in there for $175,000.
I'll stop you there.
Okay.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped too far. I jumped too far.
What are you trying to do to us?
I was going to end, sorry. You know, hey.
Nice try. What are you doing?
Had the filler buster go.
MFT for you.
All right, so Howard covered quite a bit.
Quickly.
So anywhere from administration all the way through to public benefits. Any questions for Mr. Killian or staff? Alderman Toledo.
Yes, thank you. How would you like us to proceed? Because do you want, like...
I don't care where you go. I mean, we could try to go in...
I don't know if it's effective for me. I have some questions on different components that he went through. Should I do all of my questions?
As long as you call the page...
And then another alderman does all of their questions?
I think as long as you call, oh, I see what you're saying. You want to be fair to the other aldermen, is what you're saying.
Well, of course.
Well, how many do you have, for example?
Maybe like eight across all of those.
That's quite a bit.
It is.
It's a big budget.
I don't think there's any reason why you can't go through all eight. You'll probably check off a bunch of other peoples here. So you have taken the mantle, the floor, so to speak. Let's kick it off.
Okay. My first question is on page, actually, it was in your overview, Director Killian. You mentioned, you highlighted a number of different streets slated for 2019, and I thought you mentioned West. And I wanted to clarify if you did, and if you did, which part of West?
It is west from St. Charles, north to the UP tracks. Okay.
Okay. My next question was on the, your discussion of the new computerized pavement management system. Can you just give a little bit more overview of how that system works?
Yeah. I'll let Kent fill in on that because he's the one heading up this project.
Thank you, Jim. The pavement management system would be done by a consultant, and there's a few consultants in the Chicagoland area that, for lack of better words, drive around with specialized equipment and evaluate each street we have in the city. There's a number of variables that they score each street on. And as Howard mentioned, currently, we're reviewing our streets and preparing our five-year list with street and engineering department staff. The reason we're looking at this new approach where we hire consultants with specialized equipment is not only do we think it might be a better long-term approach for roads, but also see, our funding that we get through CMAP and through DuPage Mayor's and Managers is changing to a requirement that each community have a pavement management system. That's a general term, if you will, but a lot of what they're looking for is that each community has vetted their streets, that they're not trying to get federal funding on streets that don't need work, and they want to make sure that the communities have put in the thought behind it. And one way to do that is to hire a pavement management consultant who will give you a global look at your streets and evaluate them from an outside perspective.
Thank you. So, I said about. So is this as simple as someone else is driving around and being like, "Oh, there's some cracks there, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna score this visually"? Or is there a more technical and less subjective way of evaluating the condition of the street?
I have not seen it personally. I've only talked to consultants about it, but it's very technical. It specializes, equipment that's driven, it takes pictures, it, I believe it even drops weights sometimes in the streets to check the density and the reaction of the pavement. So it is very technical, less, less visual, if you will, with the human eyes. It's more done with computers, more or less.
Great. Sounds wonderful. Check. This is like comedy hour for me tonight. I don't know.
That's why we ended at 10 o'clock.
Okay, yeah. I should be in bed by now. That's what happens. That's exactly right. Page 129, line item 80-15. The budget from this year to 2019 is significantly different, lower. And I think that's our, kind of our big number, although, so something happened in 2018 that made it artificially high, potentially. Could you just explain that, please?
Kent, I'll take that microphone back.
Thank you. This account is highly variable every year, depending on what roadway jobs we have each year. There are certain things in this fund that are the same amount each year, such as asphalt street resurfacing. That's 2.1 million dollars projected for next year, and then four years after that. We also do concrete street resurfacing in this fund, which is around a half million dollars. We also do parking lots of approximately 102,000 dollars. So the main variable are streets outside our residential streets that we do each year. The reason 2018 was high is we did the industrial park, Streets of Spangler, Wrightwood, Larch, and Diversey, that added about 1.4 million dollars to the 2018 budget for this account. And then we also had two major roadway improvement projects, one being York Street out in front of City Hall. That was about $700,000. And then Poplar Avenue from Park, which is essentially the UP Railroad all the way south to Valette, that project added about 700,000 or 800,000. So collectively, those three roadway jobs added quickly in my head about $3 million or so to the normal annual budget. Next year, we're projected to do Spring Road and West Avenue, and those two jobs are going to be about 1.3 million, plus or minus. But the reason you'll see in 2020, we go down a little bit again, I'm sorry, we stay about the same amount as we have Butterfield and York improvements of about 600,000. So again, it goes up and down, but it's mainly dependent on the major roadways that we add and subtract from the program each year.
Thank you. Check. Oh, wait, how many was that? Page 131. Director Killian, you mentioned under, when you started talking about this particular section, snow removal and ice control, you mentioned that the salt dome is complete. And it just spurred a question in my head because I thought we built the salt dome so we would spend less on salt over time, but the salt budget seems to be the same. Where are we getting that payback on that project?
It's not so much that, well, one of the paybacks is when you go out to bid, the timeliness of when you can take the salt varies the project. You can, when you bid it, you bid a set amount, but you can buy down to 80% or up to 125% of your salt. If you tell them you can take it all upfront or early in the season, you usually get a better price because they know they can deliver it, they don't have to store it as long. When you sit there and call it every other storm, which what was happening, we were calling it, you know, we'd use 500 ton, we'd have to order 500. You tend to get delays, and then the price tends to be increased because they're storing it at their facilities. So basically, right now, we're not using less salt, it just gave us the capability to hold more. You'll see the savings down the road when we have the real bad winter, where we go through more than 4,000 or 5,000 tons, that we're now out in the open market paying $2 to $300 a ton, trying to get it in here, that we'll actually be able to have it available.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't necessarily see it borne out in the budget numbers. Like, I understand logically what you're saying.
Right now, we're still using the same amount of salt every year.
What line item are you on?
Well, what line item?
4046. 2016, it was 1,850, then it was 950, so maybe a lower salt year. Budgeted for 1,000 this year, but it was actually estimated to be 2,500, you know, and then projected to be 1,500 and 1,500. So not meant to be a gotcha, I'm just trying to kind of understand, like...
Sure.
...how this works, you know?
Yeah, and that's a fair question, and I would, we cut Howard off before we get to MFT. That's where a majority of our salt expenditures come from. So if you turn to page 189, you'll see the real salt expenditures.
It did seem low.
Yeah.
It seems like such a small amount of money, but...
Alderman Toledo's trying to figure out the ROI on a dome. Our expenditure line is $1,500.
Yeah.
Is that what we're struggling with here?
Yes.
Check, Jim.
That makes sense. This line item makes more money, like several hundred thousand dollars.
And when we, when we did advocate...
It did fall flat when he talked about how great the dome was, and you looked at the line item. This, wow, 1,500 bucks, that gets him excited. What page are we on, Jim?
189.
189, there we go.
So when we advocated for the dome...
Who knew we could laugh so much about salt?
There you go. All right.
That was due to, my, my main focus on that was because we, we came very, very low in our quantities with really very limited ability to replenish in one particular winter. It was a very bad winter, it was a very cold winter, and the rivers had frozen, and so salt prices, I don't know if they doubled, but certainly they went up at least by 50% and trying to get some in. And so that's why we advocated for the dome, is to make sure that we had enough, number one, so that we could apply it, and then that we would save eventually as time goes on. So it was more the supply than it was the ROI in that particular project.
Yeah, I know, I remember that year specifically, maybe three years ago, four years ago, we were actually rationing which streets would get it. We were on the phone, like, "Are we going to get it on Tuesday?", and they wouldn't show up on Tuesday, so that was sketchy time, to say the least. Alderman Toledo, by my calculations, you have three questions left.
I may, I may under, over-deliver. Okay. Page 138, regarding the light standards on North Avenue and the corrosion. Are we replacing those standards? I guess the simplest way of me asking this question, are we replacing those standards with something that won't corrode in the future? Or do we know the root cause?
We're going to aluminum poles.
Great. Thank you.
On that, to piggyback on that, we'll, five and a half. That seems like something, light poles seems like something that would fall right into that sweet spot of transportation, which the federal government loves to pay for. Any grants out there for light poles, safety, you know, that kind of hook?
Not that we've seen. There is money available for new lighting, and if we had a roadway that had no lighting, there's money available to put new lighting in. We haven't seen it for just virtual maintenance of it. I mean, we could inquire about it.
Okay. You triggered something else. What type of lamps are we using? Well, Alderman Toledo said she's coming into her, under her eight, so I'm using it. What kind of lamps are we using?
And some of them, we are going LED, but we have to be careful because you want to have the same light up and down the roadway. So if we replace a pole in the middle of a block, there's just one, we don't want to go to LED and leave the others. So it's more of, as we get to a stretch, we're slowly replacing them out to LED.
Okay. Didn't mean to take the floor from you, Alderman Toledo.
We did...
No problem. You actually, I was going to give one of mine to Alderman Hanquest, and then you took it for him, so the plan's working.
A quick follow-up, we did, you know, up in the industrial park, we did receive grants from ComEd to change those all out to LED.
Okay.
But also, we do have a referral in for the actual, the lighting of what level that, we'll be coming back to the committee on that shortly.
I'm done, I'm going home. Alderman Toledo, anything else?
Last question on page 144, J-forms related to...
What page?
Fuel, 144.
144, okay.
I just wanted to clarify, and you addressed this regarding some of the, like, building improvements that the Park District actually had, you know, contractually, they pay for part of that. I'm just assuming, and I want to confirm, that the Park District and the school is paying for the fuel that they're using.
Yes. They pay for all the fuel that they purchase from us.
Wonderful.
What's our markup on that? Nope, just kidding.
There should be an IGA for that.
We're going to renegotiate that part.
I rest.
Prosecution rests, Howard. Any other questions for Mr. Killian? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 125, line item 30-92, contract staffing.
125?
I'm sorry?
What page?
125.
Got it.
Line item 30-92, contract staffing. I see this proposed year, and I don't believe there is a J-form that it almost doubled. It's going from the estimated of 40,000 back to what was budgeted last year of 70,000. Could you explain on how come we're going back up to that amount, or how come we didn't spend it all this year?
That particular line item is used for plan review services. So currently in engineering, we have two part-time planner reviewers that are consultants that come in and help with, help us with anything from a residential, single-family home to commercial developments. That line item also includes if we send out plans, for example, the new townhomes that are proposed along Butterfield Road. There were some stormwater implications, some adjacent wetlands and floodplain. We send the plans out to a consultant, and so that line item is for anything related to engineering contractual services for plan review. It does go up and down depending on what's going on, but as we've said, we're projecting another active year in terms of development next year.
Thank you. May I continue?
Absolutely.
Don't have the exact number of questions I have.
Can I add to that before we move on?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So to, your question about the J-form, typically when it's budget to budget, we don't do a J-form when it's actual, I think what you were comparing was actual to budget. We've not done that. And then, secondly, to add on to what Kent said, I think the council knows that we, what we've seen, we've, we've analyzed our building permit process and tried to make improvements where we could to speed that timing up, and so that's why we bring in the temp help for engineering to get through those, mainly the stormwater provisions that we've put into the code.
Alderman Bram.
This is just a general, so it's not on any specific page, but as the Public Works Committee knows, I ask questions anytime vehicles come up. So I'm just going to ask that generic question out of all, since the Public Works Department seems to spend a lot on vehicles relative to the other committees, is there any of these many vehicles, the pickup, the hybrids, et cetera, that we can hold off on this fiscal year and delay to next fiscal year?
The fleet supervisor reviews that all before we do the budget, and these are ones that have been delayed in most cases for years or are facing major repairs at this point. So anything we do have in the budget, we've pretty much evaluated and does need to be replaced.
Okay. Again, another general question, on some of the departments in the budget, under Public Works at least, some of the full-time salary wages went down. Is that just because we're reallocating on how we're distributing in the various accounts? I don't believe we reduced any staffing. So as an example, on page 128, line item 1001, I'm seeing for street and alley maintenance, you know, projected 249,400 this year, and it's always been in the low to mid threes. I assume it's just an accounting issue or distribution of dollars issue.
Everybody's looking at someone.
We're going to get back to you specifically on that one.
Okay.
You know, the other item, a minor part of that, not the full dollar amount is, though, in some of these departments, we are losing to retirement some longtime 30 to 35-year employees. So their replacements are hired at a much lower level than, than they're, I mean, it's not the full, as in this example, $100,000 with one employee leaving, but that's part of it.
Maybe we have an answer.
So as part of going through the Finance Committee, there was a lot of discussion starting last year's budget of the fund balance in the motor fuel tax fund. And so we are, based on direction from the committee and the council, reducing that fund balance, so we've allocated additional salaries out of the general fund to the MFT fund to lower that fund balance to, over the next two years, to 15% of revenues.
That makes sense. It could have been accounting magic as well, but that definitely makes sense. On that same page, 128, residential stormwater management programs, I know it's after 10 o'clock, so I'll just ask if that line item, 30, I circled over it, so I can't even read it anymore, 30, 50, or 55?
55.
Could be put on the circle back list, since I last, missed the last budget meeting. We're still doing the circle back list?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Repeat that one, please. Residential stormwater management programs, page 128, 30, 55, requested to be on the circle back list.
Yeah, I just want to get some data where it's at this year with the new program. Before I forget, I'll just mention two others for the circle back. The York Prairie Path underpass, and then the overpass for Route 83.
Where are they?
It's just capital under the KEB. I don't have the line item or the KEB number. It's just capital under the KEB. I don't have the line item or the KEB number. Sorry, I'm just paging through. On page 133, we already talked about the ash trees and the elm trees for forestry. Is our goal to, within the next two or three years, to remove and replace all the city ash trees, at least?
You know, initially, that was the goal. I think we're finding that certain species are surviving a little bit longer of the actual ash tree, are not impacted as much, so if they're still in decent condition, not causing any danger to the public, we are leaving them up as long as we can and taking them down scheduled. And that's the same thing with the elm trees, is we are seeing some of the elms are surviving longer than we thought, so they're only coming down if we really need to be removing them.
Okay, makes sense. I know, I thought we had a plan before, but that definitely makes sense. If they're lasting longer than what we expected, why remove them early? The only other question would be in regards to the propane, the gas, and the diesel fuel. Do we predict not this upcoming fiscal year, because we're converting this upcoming fiscal year to some of our vehicles to propane, but the following year? I'm sorry, I don't even...I think that's on page 142. 142, 4018, 4019, and 4074. Are we predicting the following fiscal year, 2020, and I don't see it from the budget numbers. Do we forecast our overall fuel expenses to go down by utilizing propane and other alternatives?
We hope it'll start occurring. You know, one of the problems we run into is that a lot of our fuel usage is really dependent, both on what the fuel cost is coming out of at any given year, but also a lot of it's dependent on how bad of a winter we have. You know, if we have less snow events where we're not plowing, you know, we're only plowing for five events instead of, you know, 20, we...our fuel just decreases naturally right off the bat. So again, we are seeing that, the experience of it, as we get more vehicles, we do expect that the gas prices, the usage to come down, but also more hybrids that are becoming available and more fuel-efficient. I think more...we're hearing that more of the Ford Patrol vehicles are gonna be all hybrid soon. You won't be able to get a straight gasoline anymore for a Patrol vehicle, so those will slowly eventually bring down the gas numbers also.
Along with that, I don't know how many or if there are any in the Public Works Department, but our electric vehicles that we have, have we seen a cost benefit or return on investment on those vehicles?
You know, part of it, they're used...one is used for the Inspection Division and Public Works and Engineering Department, so it goes out daily. The other's more of a pool vehicle that deliveries and the mail people use, so, you know, we are...I mean, definitely no fuel is being used on those. They're just straight plug-in. I don't think we've run the numbers yet long-term to see the return on it, but, you know, definitely the fuel savings are there with it.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Killian? Alderman Levin.
I have two, but I'm only going to ask one.
Great.
On page 130, it was the item underlying at the bottom of the page, she talking about the Palmer Drive underpass landscape improvements. When the...they were done, I think, last year next to the museum, they took out the walkway that went down from Park to Palmer Drive, and I asked a question back then if...because I think people use that one, like, if the train, like, tonight, is stopped on the tracks, it was nice to have another option to go under and come back, and I was told that might come back. Is that true, or is that part of this budget, or are we waiting to see what the museum campus does?
You know, I think we're waiting to see the museum campus. We really only...we haven't...I think the long-term, we've received one call from a person questioning it being missing. We haven't received any complaints about it.
One? Was that Alderman Levin?
The other thing is, of course, with the new train station project coming up, there will be a much more usable-friendly underpass right at York Road, you know, about a block to the west, so we're thinking that more people will probably use that than the cost of going down the stairs at that point, so I think we're looking at both ends, but we haven't received the complaints that it's not there. People are using the ramps and getting through there.
All right, I'll take your answer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Before I ask for an adjournment, we'll be back here next Monday as well, and I wanted to...I didn't say at the beginning of this meeting, and Alderman Bram mentioned it, certainly we are maintaining a circle back list. That certainly helps if and when there's any changes recommended to the budget typically during our last meeting. In addition, I mentioned it during the last meeting. I'll mention it during this meeting, and I know people have been taking advantage of that. As you go through the budget, if you do have questions for staff, certainly they're ready, willing, and able during the week to answer those questions, and I appreciate the folks who have been proactive in asking staff and getting their questions answered. Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan. Second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.